Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting. Today is Thursday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Our meeting is being televised and recorded by WCTV and also an audio recording is being made by Jamie Wickston. We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We have four school committee members here and Ms. Rossi is, will be here soon. She was just running a little bit late. Before we start the meeting, I just want to have a moment of silence for Patricia Schaff. She was a secretary at John W. Deacon's Elementary. She recently passed away. She was known for her professionalism. She served as the president of the secretaries' union for a time and we'll just have a moment of silence. So first on the agenda is public participation. I don't see anyone here tonight to address the committee, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is good news. Would anyone like to share any good news? Dr. Schwalm?
Good evening. Am I on? Yes.
I think so.
I just wanted to mention that we received an award from Modern Teacher, which is the, it's how we actually started to develop our strategic plan. There are one hundred and thirty indicators that we have to meet and so far we've met about sixty of those on the list of one hundred and thirty within those standards and it follows our learning plan that we created, but they actually announced an award at their big national convention and then it was sent to us and that's really exciting, so we're getting there and it's exciting to be recognized for that.
That's great, thank you. Anyone else? Jeff?
Kevin and I were at the playoff game. The basketball team, boys' basketball team had a fantastic season. They played their hearts out, even when they, they were getting killed in the first quarter and the second quarter, they came back to almost tie it in the third quarter and it was a, coach, how do you pronounce his last name?
Faniel.
Faniel and his team deserve a lot of credit.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? I did attend the DECA State Convention last week. It was the first time they'd been back in person in a couple of years and it was great. They just picked up right where they left off. There, I don't know, there were thousands of students there, so I never did see anywhere him students, but it, but it really went really, really well, so I was really happy for the kids that they were able to, to get back there and, and do their thing. And I wanted to congratulate the students at the high school who are winners of the Abigail Adams Scholarship. I know Adrian, you were one of the scholarships, so congratulations and hopefully, maybe Dr. Shaverhood, we could invite the, the winners here to a meeting so that we can acknowledge all the winners from the high school.
I think we have another proud mother in the, in the group.
Yes, we do. I didn't, I know she doesn't like the attention on herself, but yes, congratulations to Abby also, Jamie, for winning that. Okay, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the report of our student rep, Adrian.
Thank you. I'll start off with a few of the shorter announcements. Like you mentioned, there was the DECA State Convention that happened last week, I believe it was Thursday to Saturday.
Saturday, yep.
Yes, and then there was the Abigail Adams Scholarship. I believe around twenty seniors got it, around that number. In addition to that, there was a Credit for Life Convention today, which is kind of like a job simulation almost, so students went to creditforlife.org and created an account and then we selected our future careers that we were interested in and it told us what our salary would be and helped us kind of sort out our monthly, like, monthly budgets.
That used to be held in the high school gymnasium for years. It's now virtual, is that what you're telling me?
Yes, it was all virtual. We were all, all the seniors were in the cafeteria today. We watched a short presentation by someone who works for Credit for Cape Cod Five, I believe, and he just told us five tips to, that would help us out financially when we're older and then we all went to the website and did a little simulation.
How was it?
It was really interesting, actually. It was kind of, the people that I sat with, we kind of like made it a competition to see who could save the most money at the end of the month, so it was really fun.
That's a good goal.
Well, Jeff and I used to volunteer there when it was in person.
Oh, really?
It's been a couple of years since we were able to do that, but yeah.
I have three members of the tennis team who are on DECA and am I correct, they, they use it as an excuse, I'm kidding, for not being at practice because you guys are going to Georgia for the international, some of you qualified for the international DECA competition, yes?
I'm not sure because I'm not in DECA, but that does sound right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they go on to nationals after state.
Well, I said regionals or nationals and they said, no, it's international now.
But it is, because it's called ICDC, so it's the international career.
Okay, bottom line is, they're still doing a great job even with Cindy having left.
Mm-hmm, they are, they are. But I'm excited to hear that you did Credit for Life, even, I mean, if it was virtual, hopefully, it's great that they brought it back this year. Hopefully they'll work up to getting it back in person.
Yeah, hopefully next year it'll be in person because this was a really fun experience and it was very interesting to see how, how all the different careers kind of planned out over the years.
Mm-hmm, it's really fun to watch the kids when they realize they can't drive the car they really want and live in the house they really want.
Yeah, there is options to.
They have to re, yeah.
There's like options to rent cars or live at your parents' house to save money and I think everyone did that.
Now, wait a minute, that's something new. I don't think they.
Oh, yeah, you could live at home.
That was even when we were doing?
Yeah, yeah, that was an option. It wasn't their first choice, but that was an option.
I was doing the healthcare stuff, but it's a real reality check, that's for sure.
It really is, yeah, yeah.
In addition to those short updates, I think since the last time I was here, the masks have been lifted, so it's very interesting seeing all the new faces at school, even though we've been around these people for a couple of years now.
So I have a question about that. The last time the superintendent reported, the first day after the masks were lifted, there was still about twenty-five percent who were wearing them. The next day or two, it dropped down to about ten to fifteen percent. What would you say it is now?
Probably, maybe around ten or even less than that, I know.
But it's still significant?
Yeah, it's, I see a lot, like you said, like since the masks have been lifted, a lot less people have been wearing them. I think they've just gotten more comfortable with taking their masks off, but there still are teachers and students who keep their masks on all the time.
That's interesting.
In addition to that, an update to my tree planting event, we sold a hundred and seventy-seven trees, which is about fifty-two over our goal, so I'm very excited that we were able to reach that goal.
Oh, I saw a report, which I, and I should have, and I apologize, I should have sent it to you, that said where you plant the trees and what trees you plant makes a huge difference in terms of its impact on the environment. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Do you, are you comfortable that this project is in fact planting the right trees in the right places?
Yes, because when I signed up to do this, I had to select from a very specific list of trees, so it wasn't just like any tree species native to North America, it was native to Massachusetts. And then on to our longer announcements, I met with the senior class officers a lot, on Monday, actually, and we went over a lot of stuff. We decided on our graduation song, which is Night Changes by One Direction. We're thinking of hosting a superlative award show, kind of just giving trophies to all the people who won superlatives this year. We thought that would be like a really fun idea. I think Old Rochester did it before and we took inspiration from them. In addition to that, we're going to have our senior sunset on May twentieth and we're deciding between onset or Little Harbor. We think onset might be the choice that we're going to decide with, just because we'll be able to show up a few hours early and shop around on the beach before we all hang out. And then for prom, outside guests have been approved as of Monday. It'll be at Plymouth Plantation. We're still deciding on a meal to have on the day and then we're searching for an announcer for promenade. We're also discussing the possibility of bringing back Mr. Wareham, which I know is very popular in the school. I've never been to it myself, but I would love to have it. And then we're also deciding on a senior trip. It may be at Six Flags, but we're also deciding on a possibility of having it just be a location trip, either to Boston or Provincetown. And then yesterday after school, students in Key Club decorated the cafeteria for St. Patrick's Day, so for today, there were green tassels and clovers all over the poles in the cafeteria. The last thing is that student council is planning to work with the art teacher, Mrs. Dionne, for her art show, where I think students are just going to volunteer to dress up as fairies, because I think there's going to be a fairy theme for it, and then also pass out candy at the event and just volunteer to help the little kids who are going to be there.
Nice.
And that concludes all of my updates.
All right, excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question for the student representative.
Go ahead.
So the tennis team, basically, the seniors in particular, refused to play practice or play a tennis match on the day of the prom. So my question for you as the student representative is, do you think that's, that's a fair objection? Even in the morning, they couldn't play if they had the prom that night?
I think it's kind of fair. It depends on, I'm assuming it's going to be later into the season, because it'll be late May, that prom.
May fourteenth is prom.
Yeah.
Okay, so if they, if I asked them to play tennis in the morning and they refused, I should, I should say their student representative says, no, your coach is right?
Um, I don't know. I feel like a lot of seniors, as for, as seniors, prom is like kind of an important thing to a lot of people, so I understand them not wanting to show up, but I'm not on the tennis team, so.
Adrian, don't be afraid, to be honest with him. Would you like my opinion?
No.
All right.
I'm finished, believe it or not.
Okay, all right. Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, thank you, Adrian. Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the student attending report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Shaverhood.
Okay, thank you. I provided you with a handout that summarizes the last three years. So when you look at the vocational school enrollment, over the last three years, we've gone, we've gone down, meaning not sending as many students out by twenty-five. The charter school, we're at ninety-eight and three years, or two years ago, we were at ninety-four. School choice is at two thirty-three going out. Two years ago, it was at two forty-seven and last year was at two forty-two, so we're down fourteen, students staying in. The home school, as you can see, has gone up from two years ago, down from last year. The private and religious schools were at one twenty-six students going out and two years ago, we were at one thirty-five, so we've gone down nine. If you go on down, the school choice in, we're at sixty-three this year, two years ago, we were at sixty-nine. Foster care, this year we're at fifty-six students, two years ago, we had six, so that's been a tremendous jump. Homeless, at this point, this year, we're at twenty-eight homeless students, two years ago, we were at three. The collaborative, we're at twenty-nine this year and two years ago, we were at thirty-one, we're down two, meaning two less have gone out. In-state private is nine, two years ago, it was twelve, so we've kept three more students in with us. Out-of-state private, though, has gone up by three. So when you look at everything put together, our enrollment this year is two thousand six hundred and eight students. Two years ago, we were at two thousand seven hundred and fifty-four, so we certainly have lost a number of students, but you can start to see a trend where students are staying with us than they have in the past years.
Does anyone have any questions? Mary?
So I'm curious about the, the high school. Since we have the eighth graders over there now, have we seen an increase of students staying?
Actually, in eighth grade, yes, because this year in eighth grade, we're at two forty-eight, last year we were at two oh three and the year before, we were at two forty-one. But when you go from eighth to ninth grade, this year, we're at two sixteen, last year, we were at two fifty and the year before, we were at two fifty-three. And so you kind of see a trend going, but you, I certainly see students leaving in the eighth grade into ninth, which makes sense, but we're maintaining with just a few, I guess, I would tell you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Kevin or Jeff?
I was just questioning, just wondering about like the percentage change as opposed just to the raw numbers. I know you probably don't have that in front of you right now, but it, because it would just depend if the population was significantly smaller in like this year than it was two years ago. I don't know exactly what these numbers would mean as opposed to the percentage, if you know what I mean? I mean, I can see that, obviously, they're going down, some of them are going down, but it's just, I guess I'd need to see the percentage for it to make most sense, that's all.
Jeff?
Do you have a breakdown of the two hundred and thirty-three choice children?
We do have.
And is there any, is there any, is there a significant majority going to another district?
We have a high percentage going to ORR, Bourne.
Carver.
Carver, yeah.
And Middleburg.
And Middleburg.
It was part of the, it was part of what was sent to us. Just so you know, you have it, so you can take a look at it. There had been discussion over the last couple of years, just of there being a general drop in population of students in this area. Is that still, is that still the trend?
Mm-hmm, it is.
Okay.
Last time I looked at it, it literally accounted for half. I mean, way back when, early two thousands, we were thirty-five hundred kids in the district. So now we're down to about two thousand and the last time I looked, about half of the difference was literally the kids didn't exist.
Mm-hmm. Well, so if I'm reading this correctly, right now, we have two thousand six hundred and eight students, whether they're here in Wareham or they're out at other schools. And last year, we had two thousand six hundred and forty-one, so that's just a drop of the total number of students, regardless of where they're being educated. Okay. Well, thank you for going back and doing that.
You're welcome.
That history. I just have a question about Bristol-Aggie. I see that we only have a couple of students there and they're both seniors. Are, are students still eligible to go there even though Upper Cape has the animal program now?
Yes, students can go to Bristol-Aggie if there's a program at Bristol-Aggie that Upper Cape does not offer. If Upper Cape offers the program, then students are not allowed to go.
Okay. So do you know if the program, the animal program that Bristol-Aggie has, that Upper Cape now has, is comparable to Upper Cape?
It would be comparable.
Okay. Okay. All right, well, I think you answered all my questions with the, with the numbers that you presented, so. All right, questions? Okay. Is everybody okay if we move on to the next? All right, so we'll move on to the February financial report.
Okay. So you have February, this is actually of, as of March tenth, the report of the LEA budget. There are a few areas that I do have some great concern. One would be the substitute lines. We've had a number of leaves of absence and a number of days that we've need to cover and we're quickly exhausting the budget line. I'm also concerned about transportation out of district. We've had a number of students that we've had to transport and out-of-district transportation is very, very difficult to find and when you do find it, it's extraordinarily expensive. So we're watching those two areas very closely. I also gave you a paper with a blue line. Those are transfers that I will be coming back to you next time and asking for a vote. There are, and this is a little confusing perhaps, because what we're also doing is move, we will be moving the money from Deacon's lines, Minnet lines, to the elementary lines. And so we're now in the process of getting that done and making those budgets. So there are some accounts that show up as negative if they're under Deacon's or if they're under mine it, but when you move them to the elementary, then there's money in the account. So that's, that's really what we're doing now. So if you have any questions about the monthly report, I'd be happy to answer that.
Kevin? How do you feel about fuel costs and for transportation? And where would that show up in this report? Is that, or is that in a different area for fuel?
It's really different. What we get is, we get a monthly bill from the town of the fuel that we've used and then we deduct it out of, in a line, and I can get you the line and I can also get you a listing of what we've deducted. To go on to answer your question, yes, I'm extremely concerned about that as well. I've had a conversation with the town administrator and he's going to be looking at, at providing a little bit of relief to us to help us offset those costs, because they certainly are significant.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So I'm not sure where to go with this. Sorry, Bob. So I'm not sure where to go with this subject, but for, for at least two reasons, I think we should be looking at electric buses and I'm not sure how to go about making sure that there is a formal process to do that. Do you have any recommendations?
Not as I sit here, but what I will do is have some conversations and begin to get some information. Of course, you know, whenever we go to purchase buses, we also will need to involve capital.
Exactly. But I think at the moment, especially because their, their emissions are essentially zero, there are lots of grants available for things like that. And of course, the maintenance on electric buses, nothing compared to the maintenance expenses associated with normal internal combustion engine buses. So I just, I just think we ought to think about that as, as, as the cost of, of fuel in particular and maintenance rises, we ought to think about how we could go about potentially converting some percentage. The typical electric school bus can handle well over a hundred miles a day and I think that should be fine for them to, to do that and get back to the garage and recharge. Of course, there's some infrastructure costs in addition to the bus, charging stations being the obvious one. Nevertheless, I think it behooves us to just take a look at it and see what we can do, especially if we could take advantage of grants that might not exist, you know, a few years down the road when everybody's doing it.
I'll get some people looking at that.
Thank you. Maybe Dave, get, get Dave Menard involved in the process too, because I think, I think he's, I don't want to speak for Dave, but I think he, right now, he's a skeptic, so I like having skeptics on the committee, because that makes sure it gets reviewed thoroughly in every direction.
Okay.
Anyone else? Hi, April. We are talking about the February financial report.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm just gonna pull up the agenda.
Okay. My only question, you, you already said that substitutes was an area of concern for you, but even after you make the transfers, will those lines still be in the negative? Will they, they won't? Okay.
No, so I'll be making some transfers and asking for the votes to do so and it will balance all of the lines out. Now, moving forward, of course, we don't have unlimited amount of money that we can use, so we're looking at what options we possibly have to lower the substitute cost. We don't have very many, though, I will say that.
Okay. Mary?
Can I just ask, what is the junior, senior principal salary line?
That has been there for years and at one point, that was Jane Fondulus, that was going to help offset her salary. In the last several years, we've not used that, so that's one of the places that we're going to be able to make some transfers to offset some of the negative sublines.
Have you not had to use it because her salary is grant funded?
Yes, it's grant, we are paying her and it was grant funded, yes.
Okay. All right. Jeff?
Just one really quick minor detail. This is a, an Excel spreadsheet that's been converted to a PDF, is that a fair statement?
This is from Vadar.
Okay.
Which gets transferred to another program and then into Excel.
So what I'm looking at, but what I'm looking at now is not an Excel spreadsheet?
Well, that's how we print it, but it's coming from Vadar, so.
The reason I, the reason I ask is because if you look at the very bottom of page ten, you can see a column that has just a bunch of number signs in it, which is Excel's way of saying, sorry, there are too many, there are too many numbers, I, I'll just put number signs, but you have to increase the size of the column so I can see the numbers.
Yeah.
So before, before we publish it, I think we need to make sure that all the numbers are visible.
Which document are you talking about now? The budget or the February financial report?
February financial report.
Okay.
It's at the very, very bottom of page ten.
Okay.
Now, I see there are also a bunch of negative, you know, number divided by zero problems. I don't have the same problem with that. I know what that's saying and it's irrelevant, so don't try to get rid of those, but when you have all the numbers, just widen the column so we can actually see the number.
I will.
So this subject will come up again next meeting, because we'll be talking about the transfers.
Right.
Again, next meeting. Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is the fiscal twenty-three budget.
All right, so I sent you a copy of the budget, the proposed budget, that brings the LEA to thirty-one million, seven hundred, sixty-eight thousand, six hundred, seventy-four dollars, which is three percent above this year's budget. This budget does have a reduction of force or non, or not replacing some positions, twelve at this point. If we have some other movement in the faculty that we can make some shifts around, we certainly will lower the number of reductions or replace positions. There's savings in this budget from moving central office to the middle school and hopefully closing East and returning it to the town. We have reduced supplies, materials in this budget and we will also be offsetting this budget with ESER funds totaling three million, one hundred, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. This does not touch the sped stabilization fund. What we will do is instead use approximately six hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars of circuit breaker, anticipated circuit breaker for next year, which will hopefully leave a little cushion in circuit breaker for the following year. The, and not using the sped stabilization fund of one hundred thousand dollars also leaves a cushion if something would happen and they, and money needs to be accessed. When, this is broken down, it's a net of twenty-nine million, three hundred, forty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. The non-net is two million, four hundred, twenty-five thousand, eight hundred, twenty-three dollars and fifty cents, bringing you to the total of thirty-one million, seven hundred, sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
April, go ahead.
So my question is, how much roughly would, do we anticipate or how much are we saving getting East turned back over to the town and by having the central office at the middle school?
Um, I believe. I believe the savings at East... The approximate savings of the central office is about $40,000 and at East, it's approximately $12,000.
Anyone else?
Giving East back to the town, and I know the, the budget versions have changed quickly at times, I'm looking at something that totals, to April's question, $112,500. Is that no longer true?
Oh yeah. You know what? I'm sorry, April, I gave you the wrong figures. I was looking at this year's budget, next year's budget, we had increased the money in central office. Thanks, thanks for catching that, Jeff.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So... You have $2.5 million of ESER funds, correct? Not 3. something? That's the total including circuit breaker, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that 2.5 of, of ESER funds consists of approximately 2.2 of ESER III and 300,000 of ESER II? That also correct?
Yes.
Okay. And if I read your notes, if I remember your notes correctly, you, you and, and the directors, Andrea, the principals, et cetera, are still working on that, what that, those numbers represent in terms of people, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I don't want to know, okay?
I'm not telling.
I didn't think you would. So in, in thinking a year down the road, you've got approximately 2 million left of ESER III funds. So right there is a $500,000 cut in money available for the following year. And that assumes that the town administrator, and I believe he will, will follow through with 3% and we can stay with the 3% for the LEA budget. How much confidence do you have, putting aside the, the difference between 2.5 and 2, so there's a $500,000 loss of, of money? How much confidence do you have that the generic, not generic, the LEA budget, the general budget, the non-ESER budget, will be able to cope with just 3% more?
I think it will be very difficult.
Primarily because contractual increases that we ha, we have to do as per the association agreements?
Contractual, also utility costs, transportation costs. I'm, I would be, I am concerned about the future. That's one reason why we tried to roll, we did not want to expend as much circuit breaker as we had originally said, because circuit breaker can roll forward. And that way, hopefully, it will provide a little bit greater cushion.
Now, the positions that are being funded with the 2.5 million, I suppose they also could be funded by the approximately 600,000 of circuit breaker money too. But those positions that are funded by, by non-town and non-chapter 70 funds, we talked briefly in the, your budget advisory committee about loading those positions in, those are potential retirements. Is that, is that in fact the way your directors and principals are thinking about it?
Right. That's, that's what we're going to explore. The one thing that I think we need to run some numbers on...
But just to be clear, I'm not saying they're retiring this year. I'm saying they would be retiring next year as an example.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Because we need to pay 9% to MTRS, I would like to see that what, if we load it with lower salaries versus higher salaries, where we come in at, just so...
Just so everybody knows, that's the retirement fund.
Retirement.
All right. Please continue, go ahead.
Well, but when we look at our staff, we can anticipate through people sharing information, longevity, et cetera, that in the next three to five years, there's going to be a number of staff retiring from the district. It's the hope that when staff retire, that will save X amount of money and we'll be able to save more staff because we won't need to cut as many to make the budget.
I guess the point I'm, the general point I'm making is, even the next budget with 2 million of ESER funds available is not going to be easy. If we think this was relatively easy because we had all this ESER money, just having 2 million left is not going to make the next budget easy at all. And anything we can do now to help with the problem of a year from now, we should absolutely be doing. And is it still the administration's position that those funded, those positions funded by ESER, and I suppose circuit breaker, but anyway, the 2.5 million of ESER? Is it, is it your position that they should know that they're being funded out of the equivalent of a grant that won't be, that won't be renewed?
At some point, yes. Not this year. Because principals and directors have the ability to move staff from LEA to ESER. So if there's somebody that's being funded in ESER and they're, and they have a position that you cannot do without, then you certainly have the ability to move them back in to LEA and move something or someone else out.
I understand, but that begs the question, if there's a position that you simply can't do without, shouldn't they be in the LEA budget now?
Well, perhaps they're on the list to retire or something else. So that's our next step, is to go through that to make sure that we have...
I don't envy you that process, but it has to be done.
It does.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions? I just have a question about, so you talked about the 2.5 million, and I've asked you this question before, and so I apologize. I'm just gonna ask for more clarification. The 537,405, that really is coming from ESER. You just identified it in a different line. So when you say, Jeff, 2.5 is coming from ESER, it's really 2.5 plus 537,405?
I, that's not correct.
No, because there's been five, when we went through all of the salary lines, there was 537,000 that were not put back into LEA. So they're still out here that have to be paid through ESER funds for next year along with the, the difference between the LEA budget, circuit breaker, and the ESER.
So...
So are we using 3 million or 2 and 1/2 million of ESER right now then, for next year? Would be my question.
3 million.
3 million.
Yeah. So does that still leave the 2 million remaining for the following year?
I believe it's about 1.89, something like that, because it was 4.8.
Okay.
These numbers are really, I never heard a number of 4.8. I heard...
That was our total, or 4.2?
4.2.
4.2, sorry.
4.8.
Yeah. I would like to...
So that's ESER III? Yeah.
Correct.
Right.
They're also using ESER II?
300 of ESER II, and that eliminates ESER II.
Right.
Okay? So if we're losing, if we've got total of 4.5 to, to use, and we take away 2 and 1/2, we have the 2 left. But if we're taking away over 3, then we have an even bigger problem.
No, you, you don't. Because what I did in the back was I combined, where it says 2.6, the 2.6, 2.6 million, that's ESER plus the circuit breaker.
Exactly.
And then I had to add another ESER of 537. So there's a total funds between ESER and circuit breaker of 3.1 million.
Wow.
So we're back to 2.5 in ESER?
Correct.
Roughly, because circuit breaker is 6, roughly.
But 300 approximately is coming from ESER II.
Okay. So 2.5, so now we're down to 2.2 coming out of 4.2, so we're back to 2 million remaining for the following year?
Yeah.
The penultimate paragraph in your notes talks about recommending ESER funds in the amount of 2.5 million and circuit breaker of 638,000. You add those two numbers together, you're at about 3.1 and change.
Yeah.
Okay? But that 638 is circuit breaker?
Correct.
The 2.5 is ESER II and III?
II and III.
I guess where I'm not clear is, but I've heard both of you say there's over 3 million use of ESER funds. That's not what that paragraph says.
No, there's not, there's not. It's a total of, from the district, we are putting 3.1 worth of funds toward the budget.
Including circuit breaker?
Correct.
Okay. Kevin, are you with me?
I got it now, yep.
No, but I mean, does it, I know you're, I know you got it. Does it make sense consistent with all the things that we've been talking about? Because what didn't make sense is circuit breaker, 638,000, and on top of that, 3.1 million of ESER.
Right, right, right. So, but that's, I don't think that's what, right, that's what was said.
I thought what Joyce was saying. You see my, you see what I'm saying, Joyce?
Say it again. Sorry.
So am I. I'm, based on all the meetings that Kevin and I have had with the superintendent, the, the penultimate paragraph makes sense to me, which is, we've got a budget, a spending budget of 34 million and change, but we've got a town-supported budget of 31 million and change. To get from 31 million and change, it's closer to 32 actually, but 30, let's keep round numbers, to get from the town budget to our budget is a difference of about 3.1 million. And that is made up for by 2.5 million of ESER funds and 630,000 of circuit breaker funds. Do you disagree with anything I just said? Okay, then we're on the same page.
Okay. And I get it now.
Good.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry.
I hope everybody listening gets it.
Yes. No. It makes sense. Sorry.
Now, it's, and what's, what's also true, I mean, we'll have a tough time in a year from now, but the good news is we haven't spent all the circuit breaker money and we haven't eliminated the stabilization circuits, sped stabilization account either. So that's good news as well. So this is actually a little bit better than it was a couple of weeks ago. So that's good news. We confused everybody, I apologize.
Well, that's my fault, so I'm sorry about that. But I, yeah. And I mean, I just want to say thank you for all, I know that this has been a, an ongoing effort. So thank you to the superintendent and assistant superintendent and Kevin and Jeff who have met many times.
And I understand Joan and Melissa have been helping as well.
And the principals, so it's been a joint effort.
Okay. So it, it would be fair to say that the last time we voted on a budget, we voted, it was a 4% increase, and this reflects the 3% increase...
Correct.
To last year's budget. Okay. All right.
And just a reminder that I will have to recuse myself from voting on the budget.
Okay. So before we call for a vote, any last questions? Nope. All right. So I will ask for a motion.
Before you ask for a motion, do you want the motion to include anything about ESER and circuit breaker?
Well, do you not agree that it would be better just to vote on the budget, the non-net and the net amount of the budget?
Candidly, in all my years on the committee, we never had this. Now, we did have the use of things like circuit breaker funds.
Right, that's not new.
That's not new. But that was to support the LEA budget. And here, for the first time in my time on this, on the committee, we're, we actually essentially have two budgets. And I think it's, it's important, I wouldn't mind if we had two separate motions, but I think it's probably important to have the, the, at least the ESER budget recognized. Now, the counterargument, I suppose, is there's a whole lot of funds, title money, for example, that never gets voted.
I was gonna say, it's not the only grant that supports the budget.
It's not the only grant. It just happens to be a really big supplement to the, to essentially the LEA budget. And the difference is, and this is a huge difference, and that is, that all those grants, they have money coming in and they have money going out that corresponds. There's, it doesn't supplement the LEA budget, it simply supplements the educational experience of our children. This is a grant specifically, and I don't think, Andrea, you tell me, we don't have a lot of grants, if any, where we just get to support the LEA budget, do we?
No, we don't.
Exactly. So this is a special circumstance, quite independent of other grants.
So how about if we voted the budget as we normally do and then we could have another vote to specify the way the grant is to be spent?
And the only, I hate to be confusing on this, but the only reason to be consistent, we probably ought to use the circuit breaker money as part of the overall LEA budget, because that's consistent with what we've done in the past.
Well, let me ask you this. What if our special ed expenses next year went higher than we anticipate? So we, it could be possible that you could have to use more circuit breaker to cover those expenses, so would us...
That would be a vote.
I, I guess though, what I would ask would be to vote for the LEA budget at this point. Take this out at least another month, maybe six weeks farther, because there still could be some movement that happens that would change the ESER funding that we would need. Because if we have additional retirements or something like that, it might offset some of the, the need.
What is the compelling reason today to have a vote at all?
Because we're ready.
We need to vote the budget though, don't we, for town meeting? Is that true?
I do need a budget vote.
I do see you, April, sorry.
Sorry.
No, my, my question is, is usually we vote because of the amount that we are presenting to town meeting. And if I'm not mistaken, when at town meeting, do we normally have a, like a presentation asking or outlining what we need the money for, for the town to vote on? Or am I remembering something different?
No, we do that at the budget meeting in December.
So would it be possible, instead of say, breaking it down, when we vote the budget to be voted at town meeting? I know that other departments have slides or things at town meeting to explain what they're asking or what they're looking for. Would that be a way to outline where these specific funds are coming from as opposed to making a separate motion and changing like the standard protocol that we go in order to present it to town meeting?
I think Jeff is trying to, what's the word? Confuse everyone?
T-Y-A.
No, I think you're just trying to, yes, and I, and I understand...
I like that word much better than...
No, I do understand what you're trying to do, and if we, if you... And if we, if you want to do that, if you want to make a motion after we approve the LEA budget, then I think that would be best. Because then, let's say we did have to come back and have a new vote. We don't want to have to revote the budget, it would just be revoting the use of Esser or Circuit Breaker funds. I could, I see the use of Circuit Breaker funds being more
That's quite traditional.
changeable than Esser funds, is that true? Am I? It hasn't ever.
It's a separate.
Well, not since I've been on.
No.
Right, we've never said, let's vote on the amount of Circuit Breaker.
It was never added to the overall number.
Right.
I understand what you're trying to accomplish.
I do, and I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think it should be separate from the vote of the LEA budget.
I guess the fact that we've discussed it in open session means it's transparent. So, okay, I was, I don't mean to confuse, I do mean to be transparent. Um, and I guess, I guess I've accomplished that, so whatever you decide, Madam Chair, is fine with me.
Um, well, so just in the, you know, in the spirit of transparency, let's just make it clear that if we didn't have this Esser funding, we would be cutting another 2.5 million dollars out of our budget at this point for next year. I mean, that's the only reason we're not making those cuts.
Right.
Right.
But then I do have one request, and, and this goes to the point the superintendent made earlier, a few minutes ago. If we vote on the 31 million, 768, then we've got a document that, that details that. I think we don't need to vote on the 2.5 million of Esser funds and the 768,000 dollars tonight, certainly. But I would like to see, at some point, even if it's quite confidential, a document that details the use of that money too. Because that is in fact, supporting the LEA budget.
Right, well, that document has been shared with us, right?
No.
Shared with the whole committee.
The, for this year, we shared some of the Esser.
I'm talking about for next.
Yeah, I know.
Well, right, but I mean.
We haven't seen that.
No, but it hasn't been spent yet. It's been, it's been budgeted here, but what has been spent has been shared with us, right?
That's not what, that's not, yes, I get that. That's not, those are not the dollars I'm talking about.
No, but I.
But we're approving the spending of a lot of money, 3.1 million dollars for next year's LEA budget that is not in the LEA budget.
No, I, I understand.
We deserve the details associated with that.
Right, so all I'm saying is, those details to date have been shared with us, and I anticipate that they will continue to be shared with us on a ongoing basis.
But I, sorry to interrupt, but I agree with Jeff, we should know prior to it being spent.
But the superintendent is also saying that's in flux, correct?
It is in flux.
Then when you're ready, okay, we'll take that, and we can vote on that separately.
Right, and I agree with you, Mary, like, we should know ahead of time, but the budget tells us how the money is going to be spent.
No.
No, it doesn't.
Doesn't.
The, so what I will provide will be, I will provide salary listings for you, and if there's any other Esser funds that will be spent for next year, I will provide what that breakdown will be. Now, what I will not provide will be a list of names, because I know you don't want to see that.
No, literally, it could be just a sheet like this, okay? With the, with the lines that correspond to how the money is going to be spent.
Yep, not a problem.
Doesn't even need to, forget names, it doesn't even have to have positions.
Yep.
It just has, has to correspond to the, to the LEA budget that it's supporting.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
Which is very similar to what you've already shared, right?
For this year.
For this year.
Yes.
Yes, well, just so we're clear, like, I hope to continue
You will.
to see that, you know, on an ongoing basis, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so then, unless there's any other questions or points to make, we will go ahead and vote on the budget. Um, Kevin, you will, do you want to leave the room, or do you want to?
I'm fine, I'll stay in the room, but I'm just not.
Okay, okay. Um, would someone like to make a motion? We'll vote, we'll have three separate votes, the net, the non-net, and then the total.
Do we need to make a motion with the exact amounts?
Yes, so they're on the, this document.
Right.
Yep, just opening that so that I can read it while doing. Separate, sorry, I have to, I was looking for, I had it open, and then I opened the wrong one. Oh, okay. Um, make a motion to approve the net budget of 29,342,850.50 for the FY '23 budget, reflecting a 3% increase from the current town-funded budget.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain? It's four, zero, zero.
Well, one for the abstain, right?
No, he's, he's not included in the vote at all.
Okay. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the non-net amount of 2,425,823.50 for the FY '23 budget, representing a 3% increase to the current town-funded budget.
Is there a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, four, zero, zero.
And I'd like to make a motion to appro, approve the total FY '23 budget of 31,768,674, representing a 3% increase from the current town-funded budget.
Is there a second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstain, four, zero, zero. Thank you. I just want to take a minute to acknowledge to the collaboration with the town. I know that you've met with the town administrator, and you've met several times with the finance committee, and, um, a very collaborative effort to come to this budget. Okay, so we will move on. That's my agenda here. The next item on the agenda is the report, Superintendent.
Um, before we get into the bill and payroll warrants, uh, Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, we will meet with MSBA. We've been, we are anticipating being invited in to the repair for the middle school roof and the high school boilers. That will begin a feasibility study once, once, if we are invited in, then we will begin that process. So I would just like to thank the middle school staff, um, the high school staff, and Eric Trahan for all of their help with MSBA. And of course, Jamie was instrumental in helping us put all of the paperwork together to get ready to go, and we will be zooming in with MSBA on Tuesday. Next, I would ask for you to please approve the bill warrants as listed in your newsletter, along with the payroll warrants.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, five, zero, zero.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to make a, a comment. I wasn't here, I think, when, when Eric Trahan was, was hired, but he is proving to be a very valuable member of your staff. And I know he's been very valuable during this new school process, even especially towards the end of it, so congratulations on a great hire.
Thank you. He's done a tremendous job.
All right, is that it for the superintendent?
It is.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the report of the school committee. Um, Superintendent, search committee, Kevin, would you like to update?
Sure, so the 12-member search committee has met twice in the past week. First, we had an orientation meeting, uh, working with our representative and consultant from MASK. And the second night, we had a screening of candidates, which was last night, actually. We had 19 applicants for the position, and I would personally consider it a very strong pool of candidates. Uh, we narrowed the list down to six, and we will begin our interviews next week on March 22nd, 23rd, and 24th. Those are, those are not open meetings, that's an executive session. And then we will present to this committee either three or four finalists. And then this committee will conduct public interviews of those finalists the week of April 11th. Also, the week of April 11th, whatever committee members are available, we will be doing site visits to the finalists' school districts as well, as well. Um, so it is moving fast, we're right in the middle of it. Uh, I think we have a pretty strong search committee as well. Uh, so, and, and before you know it, we'll have some recommendations for this committee.
April.
I just have a question, you mentioned 12 members, I thought we had voted on 13 for the search committee.
We did, and the 13th member, which was a member of a, a union in town, uh, backed out of it and wanted to see if they could be replaced with someone else, but because we had not met, uh, there was no scheduled meeting, we could not approve that individual in time before the process began. So it was decided, along with the consultant from MASK, to, to go with the 12.
So they were okay with an even-numbered committee?
They, yeah, we had, we had discussed that, um, saying all things being equal, they've had it done before, and they thought the consensus could still be reached.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I just want to say thank you to you and to Robin Westberg and whoever else was helpful in getting the webpage up. I know that was something that I asked for, and it's, it's up, and it looks great, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Just to agree with my colleague, I think it's a strong committee. I don't envision a problem of having an even number of people. We, uh, it worked, we worked very well together last night to make some important decisions. And, and I got feedback from other people, as, I think Kevin did as well, that we're very pleased with the quality of the applicants.
That's great to hear, yeah. Okay. Um, under report of the school committee, it's not on the agenda, but, um, I did get word today that the ribbon-cutting at the elementary school is going forward. They're looking at dates in May or June, so that's really exciting. Just want people to know that it's still, still going to happen, right?
It is.
Well, actually, has, has, has the cafeteria furniture finally, exactly, it hasn't come in yet, right?
No.
It's just remarkable.
Remarkable that it hasn't arrived, or like?
Exactly, you know, it's like, I don't know how people do, do business without being able to, you know, ship something within months. And then, you know, I, I still attend the weekly progress meetings, which are by Zoom on Monday mornings, and the, and what are called the technical review committee, which follow immediately thereafter, which is any changes we have to make. Fortunately, the changes have gotten essentially down to almost nothing. But it's just remarkable that the furniture problems we've had. Thank goodness, there could have been other problems, but.
But isn't it true that it was the furniture vendor who had like a transition during the?
No, that was the transition, that was the furniture consultant.
Oh.
Transition.
Oh.
Not the manufacturer.
Okay, all right. April.
I just wanted to apologize again for, for being late to the meeting tonight. The boys and girls track banquet was this evening, so I do apologize for running behind.
You may up for it if you're open.
I was festive at work all day and haven't had time to change, so if I took the hat off now, the hat head would have been worse than keeping it on.
It would have been impossible to make a, a, and, what's the right word? A, a quiet entrance.
No, it was definitely, I, I don't do quiet entrances, so that's, that's true. But it was, it was a great banquet, so it was, um, nice to see the kids get rewarded and, and hear, um, the support that they have for each other was really great. And the, the coach had a lot of nice things to say about all the kids, which was nice.
All right, well, if there's no other business, we will ask for a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, everyone.